... competition with each other.
No.
Okay, Paul, we're here to discuss follow-up on your goals, is that correct?
That's correct.
And we reviewed everything and of course, I think you've got the sense that we thought what you had done was very good, very thorough, and any comments from...
I thought we were going to get, remember I made some mention of wanting to have a stronger statement on setting up a mentoring organization within, and I do refer to it at...
Sorry.
We do, you know, talk about staff development, but I was looking for something a little bit more specific in regard to putting a mentoring process in place so that, in addition to going, or first of all, a version is that when you kind of work in a place, you have your supervisor, and in the beginning, you don't want to show weakness by going to the supervisor, you have a lot of questions, so if somebody is assigned to be, for lack of a better word, a rabbi, you sort of go to them and find out where the dastardly is, you know, what you could reasonably expect to have happen, and then, to me, that means for, if not a faster, let's say, an easier integration into everything that's going on, and it also helps develop some relationships that you can perhaps benefit from, you know, as you move forward. So, to me, that, and I think I spoke through that.
Yeah, and I think you can do that as part of the professional development, as a new measure. I think we can over the next year institute a mentoring program for new employees. I agree with you, but I think we've turned over almost 30% of the staff in the commission the last two years, and I think a mentoring program, as we watch that new staff sort of take hold, I think a mentoring program would have been very valuable to them. So I think we can include that as a measure under the professional development strategies, and I appreciate that.
But, did you have any comments?
Well, I, in terms of the goals, that's really what we were going to talk about. And I think the process that you have laid out with Elizabeth is pretty amazing, and I've had some conversations with her because I just think, in all the years that I've been involved in strategic planning and goal-setting and all of that, it's probably the clearest process I've ever seen developed for the purpose. And I can read it, or anyone can read it, and understand exactly what it is you're trying to accomplish, how you're going to accomplish it, and how you're going to measure that performance. And I am very comfortable with what your goals are because you articulate them everywhere. I mean, there isn't anybody that knows what it is you're trying to, what it is you're trying to accomplish, whether it's through the RPP, which obviously is very clear and now is updated, and with the SENS project as well, with the commitment that the commission has made to the evaluation of solid waste management on the Cape as a whole, and wastewater issues, which we just finished talking about for the last hour. So I think I use your words in terms of the way you're going to accomplish these is strategically and tactically, I mean, that's how it gets done. And so I think that the goals that you have laid out, I think they're clear, and I think we're going to know whether, how, and in what fashion, what they are coming. So I'm very comfortable with them, and I really applaud you and Elizabeth for helping you to get to that point.
I can't give enough credit to Elizabeth for driving the process. In order to come up with a clear and concise statement, that's easy to call, it takes a lot to work to do that, and I think even some of the strategic planning we've gone through on the county, with the GANT charts, it's been more about project management, less about strategic planning, and this takes a lot of effort, and a lot of staff buy-in and from the top, you've really sort of got to be directed that everybody's going to take this seriously. We will have OGSM done for the entire commission by the end of this calendar year. And so, once you've done that work, though, I think it becomes easier to update. So, I'm proud of where we're at, it's really sort of up to a lot, all the credit really goes to Elizabeth for sort of getting us on track with this.
I was looking up, because, you know, I was talking to Mark and Maggie about the process that you went through, and I understand it wasn't just a day of, you know, being in a room and kind of hashing things out, like, what do we want to do, and what do we stand for, and, okay, that sounds good. It really was drawing ideas and conversation out of you about what your feelings were and among other departments.
Yeah, it was more like a root canal.
Right, and I can imagine. And, but it got you there, and I know that it was, you know, it must have been about at least a month process, if not more, for you alone.
It was several months.
Yeah.
And so what you need is somebody with the skills that Elizabeth has, is going to go sit with you, your department managers, have staff meetings, but it's not just getting everybody in a room for a day.
Right, exactly.
Thinking that you're going to be able to come up with this document, it is a process that takes days, weeks, months, with one person responsible for collecting all this information, and really interviewing people, because you get a lot more in-depth knowledge out of that interview process than you do by putting newsprint on the wall and sticking thumbs up.
Right, and you know, I did go on, I started to, you know, take a hold of this and educate myself as to different models that were out there, and it's clear in everything I was reading that the GANT chart system that, you know, is always incorporated here is really about the projects that will support the strategic plan. You have a strategic, yes, right.
About managing those projects that you've identified as measures, or the strategies.
Exactly, there is totally, there is a clear difference, even though they, you know, they sound very similar in their setup, like, you know, on how you're going to attack it, but the...
Outcome and the real purpose, and where they shine, those tools, are for separate things.
And I do think that, I did speak to Mark about doing a strategic plan in a more thorough way. I think that it would be worth our while to go over this, to do, and he said, "Well, Elizabeth will not be available to do it because she's on a timetable with you and a timetable with her new family that's about to come forward in a couple of months." But Elizabeth can recommend people who are, who can do the same job, and I do think that it's worth our while to really do a real strategic plan, and I...
Well, if we start now, then we'll be ready to, probably by spring or by summer, to actually have it in place.
Right.
But we need to.
We have a budget that we're looking at now.
Yes.
Strategic plan was supposed to be incorporated as part of that.
Right.
Well, we have.
I thought that, you know, at this time, where are we with regard to the strategic plan input from the department managers, because we got the forms, you know, in the mail for the budget, and right now, we have a responsibility to start thinking about the budget, and we have to incorporate what we're, you know, what input we've asked for from the department managers, because we have to make those decisions, and we don't have the luxury to wait for them.
Well, no, 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 I'm talking about something entirely different. We have a process in place right now that we are working with and have to continue to work with, but there's nothing to say that we can't start to think and work on a new process that would be in effect next year in the plan. I'm not suggesting we replace what we have now with something new, but that we begin now to look at what we want to, how we can utilize it for us in the future.
Improvement is evolutionary.
And next year, never another issue.
Hopefully, we're always looking at ways to improve, but I think that part of, I'd say, part of setting up what I'd call a consistency would be to have identified those goals that we want, or that we, you know, that we think are important, and then I think the planning, you know, helps us achieve those goals.
Right.
And those changes that we make, you know, are not changing the goals, but basically changing the pathway to getting them.
I think that, you know, when we were talking about the DOR coming in and doing a review, this was my ultimate goal in thinking that, you know, maybe using that department to help us achieve this, but I can see that they would help us, they would probably support this process, what information, maybe if DOR came in and did an internal audit, they could also, that information would enlighten a process of the strategic plan, so...
Yeah, and what I found most useful about using this process with the commission is that if you do it honestly, with integrity, then you focus on what your core mission is.
Right.
And that means making hard decisions. I've been through a lot of strategic plans that were, you just take everything that you already do, and you try to group it, rather than starting with what your core mission is, and then having to make some tough choices about whether this program really fits going forward, or whether it's out there that's useful.
Right.
We have several programs at the commission that were funded by federal grants, and the federal grants went away, and they're nice programs, but if we have to incorporate them into the base of our budget now, I'm not sure that they fit the core mission, so we should disregard them.
I'm delighted to see, I've forgotten what it means to be a Marine, because we are supposed to be mission-oriented.
Well, we are mission-oriented, and so we, and that means that we're not just going to keep going and building and growing organically with things shooting up, it's about aligning to a core mission and making some very difficult decisions about, they're great programs, but can we afford them when we have so much else to do?
Right.
That are higher priorities.
Now, when you're looking at this, you know, part of the concern, in terms of, back at corporate life, is we have core competencies, and we have accepted what our core mission is. And looking at that, and maybe we may have to look at our core competencies to see whether or not the mix of those things that are mission contributors versus those core competencies that we might have to, you know, look at very carefully to say that they don't belong anymore, or we can't, you know, they are not, we can't afford to keep those competencies because they don't contribute to this, to the mission that, you know, that we've accepted as our responsibility.
Yeah, and somebody's got to be there to ask those difficult questions.
That's your job.
And that is my job, and I think, and I sort of embrace it, it's painful to sort of call somebody and say, "We're not going to run this program," but, you know, that's what you have to do.
That's your job.
And the other thing that I've sort of embraced, that I see a lot of others keep wide and is resisting, is if you've got your performance objectives down, and it's time for a review and talk about your performance, that should be a public session. It should happen in front of people who get to see that, and they should have an opportunity to ask questions, they should know that we have these conversations, and that they are transparent.
The main criticism that, you know, the public sector gets is the idea that we want, you know, that there is a commitment to the security of individuals in employment as opposed to the security of the community in getting the job done that they're responsible for. At the same time, I think that we need to make sure that we protect the interests of people that work for us, because that's how we get our job done, but we can't decide the fact that our charge is to make sure that the taxpayers who basically put us here get those things that are, that serve their interests to the highest degree.
Paul, what are the pieces that make it a living document, you know, that term that we always use?
Yeah.
It can't be a plan you develop and put on the shelf, you have to work with it on a regular basis, how do you do that with that plan?
Well, it basically comes down to the measurements, because it gives you very tangible ways to measure whether you are, your strategies are working, then you go back and you test your strategies. I mean, not all those measures are going to be met, and the ones that aren't are going to focus to, are going to say, "Well, we need to go back and reevaluate the strategy. Is it the right measure, is it the wrong measure, is it the wrong approach on the strategy?" And so it becomes this flexible document over time with a feedback loop, but you don't see in a lot of other strategic plans, because there's a measurable element, and at the end of every quarter, we go down the measures and say, "Have we accomplished this, have we accomplished that, have we accomplished this?" And if that answer is no, then why?
And that's, and that's the kind of variance reporting that is very useful to us, because if we're, if we've set a policy, and we have an expectation, we need to know what kind of progress we're making.
Right, we're accountable and they're accountable, which I think is...
And I mean, it's difficult to come up with the right measures, though, you don't just want a quantity of reports, you know, processed, a quantity of DRI reports that are processed. What you do want to know is, to the extent that a project has come in and has been reviewed, how long did it take for that project to get through the process? So it's the right measure.
The metric you're suggesting is one, at least to get, you know, when I was sitting on the commission, was that there wasn't a complaint about a DRI, there was a complaint about the amount of time that it took to go through the process. So if you were using a metric that says that you had reduced the amount of time that was involved, and we have, and we begin to develop statistics around that, I think that that could show a measure of progress, that we could show to the community that we really have heard what, you know, what their major concern was, and we're trying to address it.
So, it's been a great process to go through, I think, having done the hard work, and we'll get the OGSM in place for the entire commission by December 1st. Then we'll be able to use this, and it won't be as labor-intensive in out years.
You're just telling people what OGSM means.
OGSM stands for objective, which is the major objective of the organization, goals, which are those broad goals, which really have a timeframe of three to five years that you're looking at, to see those goals, measure those, and then strategies for implementing those goals. And those strategies are really one- to two-year kind of strategies, and then measures, which are sort of annual, if not quarterly, measures of whether you're meeting the strategies that are contributing to the goals, and the goals being consistent with the core mission or objective that you're making. So that's it, objectives, goals, strategies, and measures.
Correct. Now, if something arises mid-year, say, or mid-plan, something that is, has a certain sort of urgency to it, that you need to incorporate, how do you do that? You just say, "We can't do that until next year," or...
Yes. No, no, I mean, that's the nature of, that's really defined, that question is what defines the difference between public entities and private entities. If we were a private corporation, we were making widgets, it's really easy to stick to OGSM. Public agencies have to put out fires, and so we, because this is the first year, we recognize that we need a, we may need a placeholder there, where we can measure how we react to situations that come up that we need to react to. And so that might wind up being another goal, is how do you react to things that come up? But the strategies get a little sort of ambiguous, and the measures are impossible at that point. So we haven't filled in that blank, that it could, we are going to track those situations that come up on an able basis, and we're going to see if maybe they fit into some of the goals, strategies, and measures that we've already enumerated, but we will collect those. So the goal would be to get through this year, see how this process goes, track those fires that we have to put out, and those issues that we have to react to that come up during the year, and then figure out next year, how, whether that deserves, how, if we can, you know, figure out a goal that encompasses that reactive nature of public And so we're going to figure it out.
So you're not going to say, would you please let her follow? So you're not going to say, "Well, it's not my job," and you actually have to create room for expansion, in a sense?
No.
To some degree?
Yes, and it is, it is our job, you know, obviously, and there would be room, some of the goals and objectives and strategies anticipate that there are going to be things that we haven't foreseen yet, but there are going to be other things that aren't going to fit into this, and so we have to find a way to fit them in. Because my sort of overarching objective beyond the commission is just my sort of philosophy called public service, is that the public service, you have to be responsive to common sense requests. And so how do we sort of incorporate that? And that sort of gets to how we react, and how we sort of put out fires, and how we're going to record our progress there, and measure whether we're good at it.
Contingency planning is, you know, is an important part of all of us, and although you can't anticipate all the contingencies, I think that part of what you're talking about is getting to an area of predictability about what contingencies you might expect, given the nature of what our governance is.
Contingency planning is one, the one that I've sort of suggested to Elizabeth is that we have another goal that just relates to problem solving, and, because that's the nature of what we're going to deal with, there are problems that are going to come up, how do we react to it, how do we solve that? It's just difficult to anticipate upfront strategically how you're going to deal with that, with the unforeseen. So it may be something that we, when we come back and we do next May, June, or when we review performance objectives again, that we have a category that wasn't in, that was about problem solving, and we detail things that came up during the year, and how we sort of dealt with those issues.
That'd be great. All right. A couple of other things before you leave. I received an email from Jessica Bradley, Environmental Protection Specialist, Marine Management Service. This is in response to...
That's in response to the front page Cape Cut talk you had yesterday, where they asked if we were included on the Federal Minerals and Management Service Committee that's going to look at federal waters and offshore wind, and to which I responded, "No, we weren't invited," and, "Yes, I am concerned, because two-thirds of Massachusetts Coast is the Cape."
Right.
I immediately got a response from EEA based on that article, and Bill White of EEA, he's the Assistant Secretary for Federal Affairs up there, and he said, "Well, we would," they didn't make the list, it's a federal list, although they did advise on the feds on who they were going to pick. And initially, I think their focus is really that area south of the islands that's already, has a grid associated with it, they can buy squares for development of offshore. So that's why the islands had representation, according to them, and we did not. He suggested that they would ask the feds to include the Cape, the representation on that committee, to be consistent with the conversation we just had, our elected officials. So it's not that they could designate the Cape Cut Commission, they did not designate the Martha's Vineyard Commission, what they did is they designated elected officials there, or the elected officials designate. So the Martha's Vineyard Commission has been designated by the elected officials on the vineyard to represent them on that. So I suggested that they would contact the county commissioners, which apparently they did this more.
The Martha's Vineyard Commission is a separate body from the county commissioners on all dues.
Absolutely, and it was actually selectmen, I think, from all six counties on the Cape that were nominated there, and they collectively designated the vineyard commission because of their expertise to participate in the matter.
So I would like to make a motion that we designate you to attend the next meeting, their first task force meeting will be November 19th, and I'll send you this email from the department.
Did they request it?
And they said that, you know, my presence would be fine, but if I wanted to designate someone, just to inform them of who that would be. However, I would like to attend the first one with you and bring you...
Are you the first?
Yeah, they referred this to me.
Have they additionally made you part of the review committee?
Yes, they said, let me, okay, so the Mineral MMS Minerals Management Service invites municipal county board of commissioners to participate in the MMS-sponsored task force to facilitate coordination and consultation among federal, state, local, and tribal governments on renewable energy activities of the outer continental shelf offshore Massachusetts. I told you, they've identified a four-million megawatts out there of wind energy. The first task force meeting is scheduled November 19th from nine, at nine o'clock at Academy Drive, Buzzards Bay over at the MMA. So, then it goes on to say, "The president's initiative is this," and they're following through on his initiative, and it goes on and on.
Were you going to share that all with us?
I just got this late last night, and I'm sharing it with you now, as I speak. Everybody here is getting it firsthand.
It's the power of the press.
Yes, so...
So what are we going to do about keeping the electric co-ops involved in this, since the investment that the county has made, has been to have the electric co-ops be the developer?
My, one of my first calls was to Maggie Downing on this. I'm not sure exactly who the designee should be, I mean, as a regional planning agency, to be consistent with the vineyard commission, we work with on the ocean management plan, a lot of other wind site, we build, we would be happy to do that. I would suggest that we keep, that we have an internal group, including representation of a Cape Light Compact and Seavac, that are all there, because I think a lot of the issues out there are going to probably be less land use impact and more power generation. And so it's not something that we could do on our own side, we suggest that we sort of partner up in order to...
So that we could ask a representative, like yourself, and somebody from the Cape Light Compact, maybe Maggie, or someone chief of the...
Yeah, I think you're going to have to, either you or your designee is going to have to go and sit behind a nameplate and be able to ask questions, but I think in order to be effective, you're going to have to be backed up by the regional planning agency, the commission, the compact, and the electric cooperative. And we've worked very closely on all of them, all the three of us, I mean, it's a good match. I don't want to ever have to know what Maggie has.
Yeah. So...
I don't understand what you're asking us to do.
I am just stating that this has been an invitation, I will attend.
Who's the, who is inviting us? Is it the...
The Department of the Interior.
Yeah, it's MMS.
Yes.
Okay, so it's the feds that are inviting us?
Yes.
Okay, and, okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept their invitation.
Yes, okay, and I will attend, and do we have a, I mean, I...
I think maybe what you should do is go to the first meeting, and then subsequently to the first meeting, we can talk about how the formal structure of this internal group in the commission, the compact and the electric cooperative is going to take place, and then who might be the participant going forward, the designee, the commissioner.
Okay, I'll talk to them about that.
I am.
Yeah, that would be fine. Okay, another, one other point I wanted to bring up, several, a couple of weeks ago, we got...
The point of order, we have to have a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I made the motion, he seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We received an email from Carrie Murphy several weeks ago about regionalization and how we could partner as towns to really sort of know where we are and what we're doing, and do you remember this email that he sent?
Yes, yes, I do.
I know that you responded to it. I've given that thought since the, you know, trying to figure it out, and I have to look at the email again exactly what he was asking, but my thought was that we could do some sort of forum. I kept thinking about, and actually, I glommed onto your idea, when we left Franklin County's presentation, our hosting, that regionalization conference at Holy Cross that we attended, it might not be a bad way to start the discussions of what is and what can be. And of course, I'm going to go to you for money, because I know that you have some money. Now, you might have an idea of how to use that yourself, but of the DLTA funds, maybe.
No, I think a regional conference that nears the Worcester Conference, that you can get the Department of Revenues, Department of Services...
Yeah, we can invite those people down.
Just to talk about those intermunicipal agreements and those tools.
Right.
Because that's, you know, rather than going service by service...
Exactly.
Just look at sort of the broad framework, that would be good. We are, we just signed the DLTA contract for next year, so there will be $150,000 available under that in January to do some regional projects. I think there are some fire-related, seamen-related projects that are coming up, regionalized assessing, these requests, or these really things that have been regionalized in other parts of the country. I mean, there was an interesting presentation on assessors for Eastern Connecticut.
Mm-hmm.
That was, that was good there. So I think a conference or a meeting would probably be a good thing on what the regional toolbox is in this league, and maybe that would lead to sort of a discussion of some priority projects that we might want to solicit for, but, you know, we only have $150,000, so that's not going to be able to cover all the bases.
Right.
So, I mean, if your Office for Regional Coordination had gone through the assembly, then, you know, you could marry the $150 and the DLTA with $150 from county funds, and you'd have 300, and I think that, if you can get between 300 and a half a million on the street in the next calendar year, I think you could really make some progress on pushing on regional problem solving.
Yeah, and I think that we will give another push of that, because there's more of an understanding of what that concept was that we were offering last year, since it's come up in a lot of discussions that I've had in the last year, I'm sure, of both of you. Pat, you have something?
No, I think, I think we ought to talk to Mark and see where we are in terms of funding, and maybe, it's possible, because if you remember, the assembly did say, "If you come up with something, you can always come back with an ordinance, and we'll consider it." So we may have some sort of funding that we're maybe able to be accessed now through an ordinance to get it, I would like to be...
I will remind you that we also... I will remind you that we also said that if we found some funding, we were going to take a look at employee compensation.
Yes, that's right.
There was a list of things, so before we, you know, before we forget about that.
No, I agree.
We said we would review that in January. Absolutely.
Yeah, it would be, most, we'd have some funds, the LTA funds that are available, where towns didn't spend, that were put on the street last year, that are going to come back that we need to spend by the end of December. So if we're going to be a smaller meeting, that we could do, and unless you'd be there, that would be great. If we have to wait until January, it would probably take a run of debt, too.
Well, so instead of having a meeting in Worcester where there is no county government, if you have a meeting in municipal county where there is?
Where there actually is, and we could even talk about the differences of what those county entities are, so that people have an understanding, because people do refer to Franklin Counties, Franklin County, and it's not...
Perco. That's only a great acronym.
Well, actually, they're more like a business roundtable, and it's a voluntary association, which requires them to recruit on an annual basis, participants. So there's no, you know, there's no force behind it, other, you know, other than, I guess they get about two and a half million to do what they do.
The service authority and organizations, towns selling their wires.
It's shared resources they have to go to town, they spend a good amount of their time selling, make sure that they sign up towns on an annual basis. And I think it's a useful thing for rural communities out of the first years that have to share some of the resources. But, you know, the one thing that I think people lose sight of is, if you have an active and a vibrant and a robust county government, you have an opportunity for leadership at the regional level that you're not going to get in a council government.
Yeah.
And maybe then Governor Patrick will know that we actually have regional government here.
Yes.
Oh, by the way, there is a piece of information I have to share with you. The Massachusetts Municipal Association is, has drafted a resolution to complain about unfunded mandates. The thrust is the ethic, you know, the responsibility that towns have to support that. But they also, they also were suggesting something that I took exception to, which was supporting in, let's see, developers' over environmental concerns. So I had already sent them the notes in, that that wasn't part of it that I could accept, but most of it is, I think I, I think I sent you the attachment to it.
Yeah.
Okay, and if you have any comment on that, please let me know.
Are they requesting comments on there?
No, no, they, they have requested comments from the committee members.
Oh, okay.
But that will be going forward to their voting, you'll probably vote on it when you go up in January, because it's a continuing problem that we had this law changed, the, there was a responsibility for administrative, let's see, accountability, and yet there was no funding to support it. And the comment that we heard from Mr. Giannetti, who came down to, you know, to give us our briefing, was, well, we thought we'd put the law in place and then figure out, you know, what the reaction was, so we could tweak it. So to me, I think that that was, you know, something that I'm concerned about, because that means that every time you turn around, there's a possibility of being told that you have a responsibility to do something that you're not getting funds to support. But I think that we have some responsibility to react to that.
I think, I think that's it. You may go.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. In, in talking about goal setting, thank you, we have Mark's review before us coming up. We were just handed what was his, you know, I'm hoping I didn't get that mixed up in my, my copy.
I got Paul Ledzwicki.
No, we got Paul. We got Paul. Okay. So Mark will be next to be reviewed, and, and I think we should...
Are we supposed to complete this in some fashion? It's blank.
Yeah, I mean, well, that was what was used, that was from last year.
That's all changed, because didn't we just accept?
We just accepted his format. And, but that is the, the type of review that I think Mark will have, and I think that we should, you know, take a look at that and discuss what he felt was his goals last year, and have they been, and really, what are we, what are his goals next year?
Do we have them?
I think Maggie sent us something on an email. My, my computer crashed the night before last, which is why I'm not in the...
They canceled my Hotmail account, and I can't communicate with anybody about that. So I've lost, I've lost three, six years of storage.
Okay.
So I don't know what, you know, where I'm at right now.
And so I would like to review that, and I'd also just like to review, you know, it talks about, you know, his, his goals, but really, you know, what is the difference, how do we differentiate his treasury responsibilities and his administrative responsibilities? And that's something I would really like to go over in our discussion with him.
And to lead this discussion, do you have some, do you have his, what he did last year?
That, I believe, was forwarded to us by email, by Margaret, by Margaret, I'm looking at her name, Maggie, if not yesterday, day before yesterday. I'm having a hard time reading it all, because I just have my phone accessible to me, as they say, my computer crashed, which is almost like being stripped. They said we're going to have to keep it to, you know, in the hospital, and I was like, what are you saying to me? Like, everything is there. All right, I just sent you that thing from the Department of the Interior. Mr. Gottlieb, you have returned.
Returned.
Oh. Oh, you're giving us the, the resource of where all the towns are?
No, no, I was just giving you the DEP, two DEP projects that are funding alternative waste bar systems.
Okay.
Through, through Georgia's unit.
All right. Thank you, Ed.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. I'd like to make a motion to accept the summary of items.
Of action?
Yep.
Yes? All in favor?
Aye. To approve.
Okay, so this is, this, just to get back, so this is what...
This is information, you sent it to me, so you see it.
Okay, I have?
Yeah, this is for Pat and Bill.
Thank you.
I didn't want to give them something and not give it to you.
Why, thank you. Oh, this was all, this was the different grants that were funded?
Yeah, it's just relevant to, she got that, she's going to have to deal with the town meeting.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to feel like I was always special.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I only considered George and Andy special on this email. So I'm sorry about that, I just, I just sent it to them, it's like an FYI.
Insecurity.
I, I know, you're very sensitive, Bill, I'm sorry. Is there anything else?
Actually, I have one thing. Can we go back to the motion? I was a little confused regarding Department of Interior invitation.
Yes. We have accepted, we voted to accept their invitation. I will attend. I will bring Paul Ledzwicki with me. We will report back to the commissioners and decide on our designees, who the appropriate designee or designees. And I will ask them on that meeting, if it's all right, if we sent, like, two, or if they alternated, or how would it be?
So the original motion that you did to designate Paul Ledzwicki, you know, one second, we can just...
No, what it was is that we, we, the motion was to, to attend, we accepted the invitation, and I was going to go to that one particular meeting with Paul Ledzwicki.
Okay.
Okay, that's what that is. So, if, and the only other...
Who's going to be, somebody?
You know what, I have to be in Boston this afternoon. I'm riding up there, I'm not sure if I'm riding with Bob Murray, but I'm going to have a 2:00 o'clock meeting with the Lieutenant Governor about the regional network to end homelessness. He has requested our presence and that of several other networks to give him an update and our impression on how things are going, and I'm there to keep Bob Murray, you know, keep a lot of...
It's on TV.
Since you're going after Bob Murray, Bob Murray is part of the business round...
Yes, and I did receive your, I saw your...
It might be an opportunity for you to discuss what, you know, what, how the League of Cities, which they're going to pursue of all regional ideas...
Right, I thought that was all great and timely.
Well, I think you'll find that the cities have a much different view than, you know, than, if their intention is to make suggestions with regard to regional government, I suggested to Ellen Fong, as I told you when you opened the note, that, that they might do well to talk to the National Association of Counties President.
Counties, yes.
And of course, since I'm sitting in a room, and they basically were, you know, I was ready to offer anything, but of course, I defer to them deciding how they're going to reinvent the wheel.
So, does somebody having an earlier meeting is one of the...
No, see, Paul is, is meeting before the government...
On H.
On Chapter H, which I would love to hear that discussion.
He's meeting with the subcommittee earlier?
At 3:00.
Great. Well, I'm planning to go to the Assembly, so you want to...
If I am back in time, I hope to hit the...
Leaving it to?
I know, I know, I'm not leaving it to, the meeting is at 2:00.
Meeting is at 2:00. So you're going back, so...
Philanthropy thing.
12:15.
Are these things to be sent to?
Um, yes. Those might be the ones that I, only I had assigned.
No, I think these.
Oh, no, these you, these you sign, Bill, and, yes, and these as well. There's some that they're just...
You voted to accept these?
Yes.
Yes, we just voted that.
I have to give Bob Murray a call. Anyway, so that is what's happened there. And the other point was, we all attended that lovely tribute to Mary Lou Pettit last week by the Community Development Partnership down in the Lower Cape, since they, I always have a hard time with their new name as well, even though it's been there a year. And I felt very remiss that we didn't have our proclamation among all the others. So in discussing that with Diane Thompson, and to try to, since she did serve 12 years on the Assembly, and I think I spoke to you about this at the Assembly that day, we would like to write it up. I'm waiting for some detailed information from one of the person, the palliter, who is going to give me, you know, her history, since she's worked very closely with Mary, Mary Lou. And I thought maybe we would call Mary Lou into the chamber and present her with something in, with the Assembly, since that was the body she chose on in recognizing her service.
When do you have this prepared?
As soon as I get that information, I will get it to you, and as, once we know we have it in hand, then we can schedule her in.
So it'll probably be...
Within a week to two weeks.
Okay.
Maybe next week, yeah, so it'll be the next, hopefully by the next Assembly session. And that is all I have. Is there a motion to move to adjourn?
Oh, I did have one thing before...
Okay, try it again. All right. I should have seconded.
The, I wanted to reemphasize the, the idea that we have access to my, this service, my access TV, and that I've been in discussion with the community TV about setting up some type of a news service where we could, they're intending to get stringers in using, you know, foot video, you know, to develop content, and it might be a way to, to get more attention paid to some of the things that, you know, we're trying to do. This is supposed to start at the first of the year, and we're trying to get the word out to people that are interested in participating, that they, they would call community TV or get in touch with them by, by email on that. I believe that their email address is www.capemedia.org. That's C-A-P-E-M-E-D-I-A dot O-R-G. And that, I'm very excited about it, because one of the things that we've been concerned about is how do we get information out on a regular basis, not just having people sort of go through meetings. The design of it is intended to be meta-tagged, so you could go to, you know, you could go to the, you know, the particular issues, you know, you wanted to find out more about. And the, and its intention is to, you know, to update it on a, on a daily basis, so that, you know, the, there's news that's current. The downside is that there's not much editing that would, you know, or any editing that would take place, or they're looking for sound bites in, you know, in, let's say, one to maybe two, you know, two or three minute interview type of segments. But one thing we've been lacking since Channel 11 went away was, you know, continuing news, you know, what was going on down here. So anyway, I, I thought it was important for, you know, for us to be aware that that's in the wind, and if anybody's watching out there, wants to find out more about it, wants to become a stringer, wants to, you know, wants to get involved with, you know, with this, with this idea, or, you know, they could get a hold of CAPE Media.
Thank you. On that public service announcement, I have moved to adjourn. Second.
I got that in fast.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving adjourn. Thank you. Andy.